Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes will be absent tonight. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings is expected momentarily. And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I will. Please rise if you are able for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Wintun peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, please salute, pledge.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela. The land acknowledgement is important and appropriate every meeting we hold, but especially appropriate and important tonight. Welcome Chairman Tarango and the Wilton Rancheria Tribal Council. We look forward to hearing from you tonight. And good evening, late afternoon, to everyone here, those in the audience, those watching from home, those watching this live on CNN and every major national network. I can always hope. I do want to say that Mayor Protem Talamontes has had a family emergency today. I think everything's okay, but she will not be able to be here this afternoon and this evening. So, we, of course, wish our colleague, our colleague, well. I know everyone is here for a particular reason, or most people are here for a particular important reason. We do have some business, an important business, before we get to that. And we begin with special presentations honoring someone who has contributed an incredible amount to the creative economy here of Sacramento, and that is Lyle Jones. And for that, I turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor, a true honor, to recognize Lyle Jones, who is the Crocker Art Museum's Mort and Marcy Friedman Director and CEO of the Crocker Art Museum on your retirement. You have given 25 years to the Crocker Museum. You've worked in museums for 50, though. And Sacramento was truly blessed when you decided to make us your home. Because many people do not know that the Crocker Art Museum is one of the oldest museums in the West. And you personally took it on when you came on as a mission and gathered your people and the arts community to raise $125 million to make the Crocker Art Museum what it is today. Without your leadership and vision, I'm not sure Sacramento would have gotten there. And I am so happy there are so many people in the audience to hear your story and to congratulate you on your retirement and what you've been able to do. I can tell you personally, in law school, I lived next to Crocker. And I was poor, and I could only go on Free Second Saturdays. But, boy, did I love the Free Second Saturdays. And to watch the Crocker expand to now where you have over 300 programs a year, and many it's bringing in the children and starting the love of the arts early, which I am so honored that my mother and my grandmother did that. And as a teenager, I got to see museums across the world, all over Europe, and to know that Crocker is just as much as an important museum as many of those in Europe. And so, through all your initiatives, I think it's important to point out that the Crocker remains the only museum in the region to receive accreditation by the American Alliance of Museums, a recognition given to fewer than 1,100 of the nation's 33,000 museums for professionalism, collections, operations, and quality of service to the public. So, Lyle, thank you. Thank you for the community. Thank you on behalf of our children. Thank you for recognizing that arts needs to be ingrained in our life, and it makes us so richer for that. So, I would now like to call you up to say a couple words on your retirement. But we in Sacramento are so honored to have had you for these past 25 years.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I'd like to thank you all for that special recognition. It's very much appreciated. I came to Sacramento 25 years ago because I saw a great potential in this city and in the Crocker specifically to help make Sacramento a better place to live, work, and play. I'm happy to say that I've seen a lot of potential achieved, but I'm really excited for the next director of the museum because there's so much more the museum can do. And I think tonight's action later with Sac Republic is also another great step towards the betterment of this community for all. So, thank you very much for everything, and just know that we're not done. There's a park and a lot of other projects that we want to get in place for the future. So, you'll be hearing more from the Crocker, and hopefully you'll be hearing more from me, too, as I continue my residency of this fine city. So, thank you all for everything you've done. And there's one thing I do want to say. We've gone through a pandemic that was extremely hard on our creative economy, and the city was one of the leaders in this nation in helping the creative economy maintain itself. And for that, we're internally grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyle, to present to you. So, I would like Friends of Lyle to come up and join us as we present this resolution. Friends and family, all welcome.
Did you ask me to take a photo with you?
Yeah.
Friends of Lyle, we would be...
Friends of Lyle.
Still recovering.
Assisted.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Sure.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
One, two. One, two, three.
Thank you.
presentation. This is to honor the 2024 City Management Academy graduates, otherwise known as the current and future leaders of the city of Sacramento. Who is presenting? Is Lynette presenting?
No, I'm just thanking Lynette Hall, Community Engagement Manager. I just wanted to publicly thank Ari Green for her leadership, but more importantly, her teamwork. So, she stepped in when Jessica Davilos-Pritos went on maternity leave, and she took on the City Management Academy. And I've received so many accolades from department heads on how professional and organized and how just a smooth transition it was. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Ari, and I'll turn it over to her.
Ari, great job.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ari Green, and I am a Community Engagement Analyst in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the City Management Academy. As you may know, the City Management Academy is a 10-week course designed to teach residents how the city functions, and each year, we welcome a new cohort with the hopes of them knowing more about the city and becoming more civically engaged. This year, I had the esteemed pleasure of managing the City Management Academy. Over the past 10 weeks, my colleagues and I hosted a cohort of 30 participants here at City Hall. We provided catering from different small businesses to support the local economy, as well as introduce participants to different cuisines. We provided parking validations and regional transit cards to eliminate barriers to participation, along with field trips to allow participants the opportunity to grasp a deeper understanding how the city functions. To the 22 city departments and their staff who presented and taught us the importance of their department and how their departments operate, we are grateful for your participation and your commitment to serving the public, and we admire your tenacity. As part of their presentations, city staff was asked to present a civic engagement prompt for participants to solve. These prompts range from outreach strategies to creating programs to issue grant funding. And CMA participants were tasked with solving these program department issues with a group to foster collaboration amongst one another and then give a presentation. The winning department would then receive $15,000 in implementation money to incorporate the solutions based on the participants' suggestions. A huge thank you to you, the mayor and city council, for not cutting the community engagement budget to allow us to allocate these funds for implementation dollars. And on behalf of my colleagues and I, please accept our sincerest gratitude. To Dustin Hollingsworth at Convention and Cultural Services and May Turner with the Department of Utilities, we appreciate your hospitality as we toward your facilities. To my colleagues on the community engagement team, Danielle, Randy, Greg, Jessica, and our manager Lynette, thank you for your support these past 10 weeks. Your help and support is invaluable to me. To all of the city staff who took the time out of their busy schedules to present and engage our participants, thank you. And lastly, to the participants, thank you for your commitment to this year's program. Each Wednesday, you watch two to three presentations from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And each night, you sat, you listened, you asked questions for clarity, you remained deeply engaged. We appreciate your unwavering dedication to your city and your communities. And lastly, it is now my honor to introduce two cohort members, Laura Legrand and Tina Jones, to share a little bit about their experience in the academy this year.
Hello. My name is Laura Legrand. On behalf of the City Management Academy, class of 2024, thank you, Mayor Steinberg and City Council, for supporting this amazing program now in its 29th year. Also, thank you to Ari Green and the entire community engagement team for leading us these past 10 weeks. CMA has given us valuable insight into the city and a great appreciation for its dedicated and talented leaders and staff. We are now inspired to take a more active role in our community to ensure Sacramento's future success. Thank you.
My name is Tina Jones. I'm attendee of the 2024 Sacramento City Academy. I want to personally thank you for the funding that you provided, Mayor Steinberg.
I didn't do it.
And the entire city. It was really, really a learning experience for us, as well as myself personally, being new to Sacramento, to learn all the different departments and the city management and what it takes to run a city of this size with all of the diversity and challenges of today. Thank you. And thanks to Ari Green and to the staff. They were great. They really fed us well. They fed us well. But I wanted to thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor has a comment, and then we'll take a picture. Is that okay?
You've got to come up here, Lynette. You're not getting away that easy.
The team, and do you have your grad, are the graduates here as well?
Yeah, they're all here.
They're all here. So, we're going to ask, we're going to ask you all to come on up for a picture, and I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
I'm going to make this incredibly brief because I know we have a lot ahead of us, but I just want to say, as a proud alumni of the City Management Academy, I won't say which year. It was a while ago. It's an amazing program that really helps people be prepared to either participate, maybe run for office one day, or participate in city government. And so, Ari, I just want to say, wonderful job.
Thank you.
All the accolades to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ari, yes, fantastic. Let's, let's everybody come on up, and we'll gather and we'll take, we'll take picture, okay? We'll all stand, we'll all stand here.
Stand here, yeah.
Yeah. That's all good. Yeah. Okay. Hi. Good to see everyone. Hello, hello, hello. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, guys. I enjoyed that last week. How you doing?
Both ways, right?
Hi.
So, nice for all your things.
Ah, thank you.
Of course. Both ways, all right, all right.
Two rows, two rows.
comment real quick? And then also just an ask. Really just wanted to take this time just to thank Lynette and Ari for their great job for the City Management Academy. I think Vice Mayor Maple even mentioned, right, that she was a previous alumni. But what's really great about programs like this, the management and the planning academy, is that it really prepares our residents to think about other ways in which they can serve, given all the knowledge they have, whether that's from serving on boards or commission. The only request I have is I would love, if possible, if, to kind of know who's in the cohort and from what district. So, if city staff can send that to us annually for the planning academy and also the management, I think that'd be really great because we're always looking for people to appoint to boards and commission. And I think starting off with our management academy and our planning academy would be great. So, if we can do that, that'd be great. Thank you, City Manager. God, thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least here, we have one more presentation for great Twin Rivers School District. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Sean Tao.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to present this resolution to the Twin Rivers Unified School District on behalf of my colleague, who can't be here tonight, Mayor Protem Karina Talamontes. Twin Rivers encompasses neighborhoods such as Arden Fair, De Apostle Heights, Dos Rios, Alberta, Foothill Farms, Garden Land, McLellan Park, Notomus, North Gate, North Highlands, North Sacramento, Robla, Rolanda, and Whittlake. Serves nearly 25,000 schools across 52 sites, thanks to 3,000 dedicated staff. Twin Rivers has a 92% graduation rate, far exceeding state and county graduation rates. Twin Rivers provides vital community services such as free food distribution, summer meals for children, free COVID-19 vaccination clinics during the pandemic, free backpacks and school supplies. Twin Rivers is a model for how schools and community work together to serve students and their families. As alumni of Grant Union High School, I firsthand knows the dedication of the staff, principal, trustees, and instilling excellence in their students, Pacers for Life. No matter what was going on at home or in the world, I found school to be a place that could thrive, where teachers, administrators believe in our abilities to do anything. I'm proud to recognize Twin Rivers Unified School District as an outstanding educational system, one that prides itself on diversity and a well-rounded experience. I especially want to thank Dr. Martinez and the board for your leadership, what you've done with the schools such as Grant High School, Rolanda, with the renovations and improvements to infrastructure. Infrastructure is outstanding, and the community sees it, and they love it. And I applaud your leadership for taking this on. With that, I would like to pass it on to my colleague, Lisa Kaplan, for a couple comments.
Again, I want to say thank you to Twin Rivers. It's not easy, and single out the superintendent. It's not easy having been a superintendent, been a board member and watched what superintendents have to do. And you have been part of the Sacramento fabric for a very long time, lasting through the pandemic, and helping continue to lead the change in Twin Rivers. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you to your staff, and thank you to board members, because it is not easy, being a school board member these days, to lead our children so that they become well-rounded and productive as they graduate and move on to their next step in life. So, thank you for all that you do.
I would also like to, like, Dr. Martinez and the trustees to come say a few words.
Of course. I just, I know Councilman Geta wants to say something. That's okay, quick. That's okay. And then I'll say something, and then we'll turn it over to them. It's all good.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to thank the leadership here of the school district. You know, Twin Rivers has the prestigious honor of having the largest, largest electric school bus fleet in the nation. And when their kids were, you know, stuck on a hot summer day in a diesel bus and smelling those fumes, now they get air-conditioned buses. And they figured out that it makes financial sense because they were able to reduce their operating costs. But it took leadership to think through about what was the best way to serve their kids. And now, the, all of the students there are going to be our next engineers, who are looking at how to make sure that their community is a place where they can actually breathe the air around them. So, I want to thank them for their leadership, again, Mr. Mayor, in every different way that we can imagine.
Yeah, and I just want to add, you know, I live in the SAC City District, where my kids went to school. And, you know, they do a great job, as do the other districts in our city. But I just want to say how especially impressed I have been with the leadership of the Twin Rivers District for a long, long time. That's the board members, and especially the superintendent. Innovative and, and success-driven, both the objective data, but also that intangible spirit around what it means to provide hope and pathways for young people in the north part of this city. I just love every single time I am out there to be with you, to celebrate one of your great advances or achievements. It just always makes me, as a resident of this city and the mayor, feel that much better about my city. So, thank you. Steve, superintendent, or board members, or?
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Stacy Bastian, Twin Rivers Unified School District Trustee, Area Four, and Board Vice President. On behalf of the district and the board, I want to thank the city of Sacramento for supporting our community students. I would like to introduce our board members present tonight, Rebecca Sandoval, Sharon Rochelle, and Sasha Voight. Twin Rivers is deeply embedded in this community, reaching nearly 25,000 students across diverse neighborhoods. As a district, we are committed to providing our students with the best learning environment and to building a stronger community. We are proud of all the district has accomplished, from improving academic performance to leading with innovative learning and engagement solutions. And our promise to our students and community is that we will continue to strive for excellence. We are grateful for the recognition of our teachers and staff, as well as partnerships like the one with Sacramento State, which allow us to set a high bar for educational excellence. This resolution in recognition of Twin Rivers Unified is truly a recognition of our students, their families, faculty, and staff, and to all who make up our Twin Rivers community and family. Thank you, Sacramento City Council, for honoring that work. It not only celebrates our district's achievements, but strengthens our shared mission to provide a brighter future for Sacramento's youth, and we are grateful for that from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager Chan, and council members. Thank you so much for this honor. I must say, it's a lot easier being on this side than being on that side.
But we'll switch places with you.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. First of all, I just want to thank you all for this honor. It's, it's been an amazing journey in Twin Rivers. You know, being a superintendent for...
Year 12.
That's, that's, that's quite a long journey. And I'll never forget my first time I met Mayor Steinberg. He wasn't the mayor of Sacramento at that time. He was, I think, Senator Protem. And he pulled me into his beautiful office in the Capitol and wanted to talk about HVAC and about how we couldn't keep kids warm in our classrooms. And I'll never forget that meeting because it was a remind, you don't look like you don't remember that. I know you remember. So, but it was, it was a great conversation, and it was, it was apparent to me, you know, what it means to educate the students of Sacramento, De Apostle Heights, and the greater Twin River areas. I just remember when, when we first started this journey, you know, the graduation rates at 75%, dropout rates at 19%, the lack of hope that was through, throughout our community at 92% graduation rate, at 6% dropout rate, at 40% of our kids reaching A through G college readiness, and last year, sending students to Harvard, Stanford, Brown, UCLA, across the country. That's Twin Rivers today. It's been an amazing journey. We have 3,000 employees who care about kids. We serve a community that is high need, but we will go above and beyond to figure out what we need to do so that they can access a quality education. And along this journey, the city has been a partner, and I just wanted to say thank you for partnering with us, the kind words that you said tonight. You know, we're just getting started, though. We're, we're not done. Thank you for this honor. We do appreciate it.
All right. With that, Mayor, Councilmember Kaplan. All right. That concludes our special presentations. We're going to get to the, I think, the lead item for tonight in about, I would say, 10 minutes. That would be my...
Mayor, I want to say something real quick.
Yes, you go right in.
One last shout-out is Ari Green. Ari is also a Pacer alumni. She was student body president as well. And so, you know, go Grant High School. Congrats. And, yeah, definitely, that's why I want to share that.
Terrific. All right. We now move to the consent calendar. We've got items one through 12. Are there any items members would like to take up separately, discuss separately, vote on separately, contemplate separately? Okay? Moved and seconded, okay? Is there any public testimony?
I have one speaker, Mac Worthy, on item seven.
Mr. Worthy.
Get our damn people in. It bothers me just that Mr. is me. I'm Mac, and remember that. I'm only Mac. I am that that I am. People, when you hear people talk here, when you eliminate competition, what do you do for free enterprise? That's what free enterprise is about, competition. You're going to identify somebody that you know, or you going to donate to your campaign, and that person gets your contract. These people here need people like making good money to support these things. That's what we need. We need economics movement here. Utilities. We can't keep going up on utilities. I told you that when you got, took over Smur. How can PG and E go from the street to your meter? How can PG and E go from the street to your meter and Smud stays out on the east? It don't make sense, people. Right that cut trees over on the 40s. Why is he going into the backyards cutting trees? We cut trees, trees, they went into my backyard and cut the right away. We had a truckload that never ground one. What is it? What is it? You wrote my daughter a threatening letter if they don't get that trash piled there for days. Go across and look at it. I followed one of the things pick up that trash all the way from the SAC State, all the way over near Fruit Ridge and never stopped. Don't you know I got the numbers of that piece of equipment? You don't write that piece of equipment for fun. That is scheduled. You go there and you see trash piled up, next day it's gone. Why you can't do that in front of my house? Because I got this woman signed. The same thing going on with FEMA. That's why. Wake up, people in this town.
Free comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes eight to nothing. All right, items 13 and 14, we can take very briefly together and dispense with them. And they probably need to be separate votes, as I understand it, but that'll be great.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm Sean Bartosz, the Code Enforcement Manager for the Community Development Department. We're gonna, I'm going to read 13 and 14 together and we'll have separate votes on them. Items before you are the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing Endangered Building Case Fees and Penalties for Special Assessments and/or Personal Obligation. Item 13, the Housing Endangered Building Case Fees Staff Report List An amended total of 100 properties with a total of $57,191.91 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against properties. Three properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line numbers 75, 109, and 120. For item 14, the Community Development Department Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliant Case Fees and Staff Report List An amended total of 407 properties with a sum of $700,934.2 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligations against the property. Seventeen properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line item numbers 31, 51, 56, 57, 58, 205, 206, 212, 221, 222, 231, 295, 310, 326, 332, 385, 656, 664, 702, 707, and 715. Staff recommends that City Council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and/or personal obligations against the properties. Thank you.
Right. So, you presented on both of the items, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So, we don't have public testimony on either item. Are there council questions or Vice Mayor Maple? Then we could take a motion on the first item, take the vote, take a motion on the second item, take a vote. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item 13.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes. Item 14, do we have a motion?
I'll happily open and close the public hearing and move item 14. Oh, sorry. I'll happy to second it if Councilmember Jennings-
Seconded, third by Councilmember Jennings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Item 14 passes, and thank you. These are important items. They sometimes go fast, but they're, they're part of what we do here in the city. But there are other things we do in the city as well. And we now get to the main item of the night, and I would like to begin with some opening remarks. And then we will hear a staff presentation. We will hear from some of the parties, the care holders to this agreement. And then we will hear from the public, and we'll hear from our colleagues. And ultimately, I hope and I believe that we will take, that we will take an important vote. So, I know I had the opportunity last Thursday to say a lot, so I'll try to keep this shorter. But there are some things that I think are worth and necessary to repeat just a little bit. And really, where I start is with my profound thank you to so many who are making this day happen. This, this complex, important, groundbreaking agreement for the people of the City of Sacramento. And I begin, of course, with the other peoples who are represented here. And that is Chairman Jesus Tarango, COO Chris Franklin, the Tribal Council for the Wilton Rancheria, to say thank you for choosing the City of Sacramento. Thank you for your heart. Thank you for rolling up your sleeves. Thank you for your vision and your belief in all that we are and all that we can become, in part because you're making this choice. Thank you to Kevin Nagel, Todd Donovan, all of the team from the Republic FC. Todd, as I said before, former athlete, cool under pressure, helped negotiate this agreement with great skill. And Kevin Nagel, I got to describe last week, and I'll repeat it because it's worth repeating it to me, a Sacramento hero who stepped up for this city and could have pulled up stakes more than once, would have been within his right to do so, and yet chose to remain loyal to this wonderful city. And that brings us here tonight to Denton Kelly and your team, to Josh, to Frank, and to Jay, and your entire team. Thank you for believing in the long haul here and the importance of staying with it for the long haul and the long term. I'm sure as businesspeople, you could have made many investments in your, in your portfolio in different ways, in different places, that might have brought a quicker return. And yet, you've seen the vision. And you've worked with your heart and with great skill and sometimes tough negotiators sometimes. But your staying with it brings us here today as well. And thank you. To the incredible city staff from Howard Chan, our city manager, who rolled up his sleeves especially these last months and partnered with me to bring this to the successful conclusion with great skill and great fortitude and heart, I thank you. Your entire team of Michael Jasso and Marco Gonzalez and, and Ryan and Lucinda and Leslie Fritchie, and of course, Matt Ruiac and Michael Sparks from the City Attorney's Office, as well as the City Attorney herself, who leads that great office, is on our call. Thank you. And to my entire team, because this has been an eight-year journey for my team and for me personally, from my chiefs of staff, all of them who have served me so ably, Mike McKeever to Kelly Fong-Rivas to Mary Lynn Velinga, and the entire team, and of course, Scott White, who I shouted out before, what I call, I call him the Whisperer of City Hall. And he really is. And we wouldn't be here without Scott staying with this and believing in what was possible. So, there's so many who deserve thanks, including the fans and, and the entire community. And so, this is, of course, we'll see how the vote goes, of course, but I think this is going to go down as a great day for our city. I think it is important to say to the members of the public, especially those who might be skeptical, we are not writing a check. These investments made by these parties are private sector investments. What we will propose doing, and what we are proposed doing tonight, is that we will pay back some of the property tax revenue that is generated as a result of the project back to the parties to reimburse them for their upfront infrastructure costs. Without what will be in the end, probably over a billion-dollar investment in our downtown Sacramento, billion dollars' worth of investment and big projects, there would be, and frankly will be, no revenue with which to pay back. Tonight's vote is the biggest placemaking, sports, and entertainment opportunity, and more than that, of course, because it includes housing, includes retail. It is the biggest opportunity for this city and this downtown in over a decade. And as big as the investment is and as exciting as it is, it also, for me, represents more The entity will still be known, the soccer entity will still be known as the Republic FC. And yet, the business name has been changed to Indomitable. That's the name of the organization. I think it is a perfect name, and I'm grateful that you chose it. For this endeavor is eight years in the making, with so many ups and downs that I've lost count of how many chapters we have all lived through together. To all the skeptics that said out loud, "This can never happen," your Indomitable City and its partners never gave up. Sometimes I wish it had been easier and that we had been celebrating this two, three, four, and even five years ago. But I also know that if it had been that easy, it wouldn't be nearly, nearly as sweet. And it probably wouldn't be as good because it took time to find the right partner and the right investor in the Wilton Rancheria. If there's one thing that I've tried to push these eight years as your mayor, it's this. Our job as city leaders goes beyond ensuring the basics. That's what's most important. But it goes beyond ensuring the basics. It is about fighting for equity, always. And our job is also to build a modern city. More is good. Our job is to govern reasonably and to aspire and to push for as many, as many places for people to have a good time, to make memories and to spend their money in the City of Sacramento. For that's a good thing, and it helps build our tax base. And to do so in every part of this diverse city. And sports itself, I have to say, is not the only thing, but it's sure one of the most important things because beyond all the economic benefits, it's also a unifier. People of different backgrounds, different political beliefs, different neighborhoods, they can all come together around the Republic and around the Kings and around all the other things that we are doing and building in our city. Tonight, we will dive into the details, which are important. But with a hopeful yes vote tonight, we will start building a big piece of our downtown and our city's future. Thank you. Let me now turn it over to Michael Jasso for some comments and a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager and your Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm very pleased to be before you recommending the passage of this motion approving the preliminary term sheet for financial assistance for the redevelopment within the rail yards of a soccer stadium for Sacramento Republic FC, the development of a live entertainment venue within the historic central shops, and related infrastructure. Momentarily, Senior Economic Development Project Manager Marco Gonzalez will present this item in some detail. Although the item before you speaks specifically to the nature of the agreement for city participation in bringing these projects to reality, it's important to appreciate the larger import of the step we hope will be taking here today. The advancement of these projects will significantly catalyze the redevelopment vision of the rail yards as the city's most significant urban infill opportunity. As a reminder, although Union Pacific completed its exit from the rail yards in 1999, the site had been undergoing substantial abandonment for decades before that point. The bold vision of the rail yards 244 acres calls for some 6,000 to 10,000 residential units, up to 1,300 hotel rooms, up to 6 million square feet of office and retail space, a major new hospital, and 30 acres of new parks and equally important public gathering spaces. Additionally, this ultimate vision will support thousands of direct and indirect jobs through its construction and ongoing operations. The end result will not only be a new home for SAC Republic in the Indomitable City, but also the cementing of Sacramento as the indispensable city, providing a vibrant urban core to the greater Sacramento region. I now turn this over to Marco, the team from Indomitable and Downtown Rail Yard Venture to more fully present this item. Marco, Leslie Fritchie, our Economic Development Investment Manager, and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Mayor Steinberg, City Manager Howard Chan, members of the City Council, Marco Gonzalez. I'm the Senior Development Project Manager in the City Manager's Office of Innovation and Economic Development. So, what are we talking about today? Let's see. All right. So, we're going to start off with some background on the rail yards project as a whole. Then we're going to get into the projects that are included in the term sheet. It says up here, term sheets, and we'll get into exactly why that's the case. We're going to go over benefits of these projects that are included in the term sheet. You're going to hear from the project teams, so from Indomitable and from Downtown Rail Yard Venture. And then we're going to finish up with the recommendation and next steps. So, taking a step back, if we look at the 2016 rail yards plan, it was always envisioned that there would be a stadium in the rail yards. So, that would be accompanied by a Kaiser Hospital, rehabilitation of the central shops, as well as SAC Valley Station. So, these were always going to serve as kind of cornerstone projects that catalyze the rest of the development. If we flash forward to today, we're making great progress. We really are. You know, working with our partners to build infrastructure as well as vertical development. But there's still a really large delta between that vision that we had in 2016 versus where we're at today and where we want to be. So, that brings us to the term sheet. So, there are two, two term sheets, as I mentioned. The first one between Indomitable and the city, and that's really revolving around a 1,200-person stadium. Now, the stadium is going to be state-of-the-art and also expandable. And then the second term sheet is between Downtown Rail Yard Venture and the city. Now, that term sheet is focused on rehabilitation of the historic central shops and a live music entertainment venue of 3,600 people in the historic paint shop. So, what are some additional terms included in these term sheets? So, we're proposing expanding the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. And so, this is a really great tool, honestly. I know you've heard a lot about EIFDs, but it really incentivizes developers to develop quickly aggressively so that they're reimbursed for infrastructure for that initial investment. And then the EIFD would be utilized for reimbursement of another piece, and that's the city's purchase of two properties to support Sacramento Valley Station. We have a really robust vision for how SAC Valley Station will be built out. And so, these lots are really important to see that vision come to fruition. So, just illustrating exactly what the EIFD looks like today. So, initially, as it was envisioned, it was designed to support soccer as well as the ancillary development around the stadium. And we are proposing expanding that EIFD to capture additional tax increment to then fund additional infrastructure facilities and really have this site-wide benefit that the EIFD can, can give us. And I want to show this rendering of SAC Valley Station, just so you get a picture of how we can utilize the historic asset, right, the historic train station, as well as build out housing, office, retail, and it can really, you know, have a complete vision for the site. So, some additional terms include city services over 10 years for SAC Republic event nights, a non-relocation agreement for the team that would be in place as long as the EIFD is in place, and then digital signage, which would include potential off-site opportunities as well as comprehensive- as well as comprehensive rail yard sign district onsite. So this is just, you know, intended to orient you in terms of the projects we're talking about. So the term sheet projects, you see the stadium and ancillary development east of 7th Street, the Central Shops, and the music venue right there in the center, and then SAC Valley Station to the south. All right, so benefits. I know there's a lot of words on here, so we'll keep it really high level, but there are a lot of benefits from these projects. You know, the initial one, as the mayor mentioned, this private investment, right? So we anticipate over $321 million of initial private investment for just the stadium and the paint shop alone. And then we're also setting the table for the site and for the region to be reconnected, right? So we're talking about reconnections to the River District, to downtown, to West Sacramento via the new I Street Bridge. And also doing this in a multimodal way. So with SAC Valley Station is obviously one component, but then there'll be a new light rail station right in front of the stadium, new bike and pedestrian amenities, and then obviously lots of open space opportunities. So yeah, it will just have this catalytic effect in terms of this investment. And then for soccer, there will be a community benefits agreement. Some of those initial items that have been identified are charitable contributions, free youth clinics, construction of community fields, and then, you know, just an overall investment in the civic pride, bringing everyone together. And then on the jobs front, it is anticipated that the stadium and entertainment venue, along with the associated infrastructure, will generate over 1,600 jobs alone. And then obviously, all the other projects that we've talked about here. So just a quick breakdown of this, you know, private investment that we're talking about. I mentioned the number of over $321 million of private investment for just the stadium and entertainment venue alone. So this chart illustrates that. And then if we jump to additional investments, so DRV is anticipated to, you know, invest at least over $30 million in additional site-wide infrastructure. And then if you layer on the city's investments, we're talking about a really robust, comprehensive list of investments to catalyze the entire site. So with that, I will pause, and I will cross it over to Todd Donovan with the SAC Republic.
All right, well, thank you for having us here. Mayor, you gave us some thank yous. We want to give them right back. You have stood by us in a way that very few would. Over the eight years that you're talking about, it feels like longer, but through thick and thin, you've stuck with us. Scott White has stuck with us. I apologize to his wife for talking to him late, calling him all the time, but this is what it takes. And to achieve something great, you usually have to suffer a little bit. You have to, and we suffered a lot. But all for a good cause. And I think that is, it's a true testament to you. And this is going to be your legacy, because you stuck with us throughout all of this. So from all of us, thank you. Howard, thank you to you and your team. I mean, same thing to you guys. I mean, the work that you guys have done for us, again, through years and years of work, to have a great deal ultimately for all parties involved, for DRV, for us, for the city. This is a phenomenal deal, and a phenomenal deal for Sacramento. So thank you. You know, to the City Council, working with you guys on so many things, having you support us, whether it's in Orlando at an Open Cup final, whether it's, you know, at Hart Health Park, you know, for a big game. You all support us, you all are behind us. It is so emblematic of Sacramento and what we're so lucky about. Because we really, we have an advantage like very few cities have. And to have a fan base that's behind me here, that's supporting us, again, through ups, through downs, it doesn't matter, our support actually just goes up and up. It's incredible, we're so thankful for that. So today, to be able to deliver a stadium, deliver on the promise of the rail yards, this is truly a special, special day for us. You know, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on your comment of Indomitable. And the reason we, you know, named the company that ultimately is that's who we are. If you want to boil down our identity, our values into one word, it's Indomitable. And what better, you know, mantra, what better identity could you have as a sports team than the idea of Indomitable, which is the idea that you are incapable of subdue or defeat. It is truly an awesome thing that we try to live every single day. We wouldn't be standing here today if we didn't live that. So we're thankful. We're thankful for the city, Urbzndomita. That's what we represent. And now the marriage with the tribe. I mean, it is incredible. You talk about an Indomitable story, and you're going to hear more about that from the chairman in a minute. But you, you know, I have to say thank you again to Kevin Nagel. Talk about Indomitable, somebody who has stuck with his team over and over, in the darkest hours. Kevin was the light that stood up. And I think, to your point, he's a hero for Sacramento. So thank you, Kevin. I know we have more to get to. Love to bring up the chairman, Jesus Torango.
We're going to the, this one right here, right? Excuse me. It's only fitting that, you know, I bring the representation of our people here with our tribal council, and our vice chairwoman here standing with us, Raquel Williams. And again, you guys have heard his name several times tonight and maybe last Thursday. Our COO, Chris Franklin, on the end there is a major reason why we're standing where we are today. So I wanted to make sure that they come up here when we read our statement to you guys. But again, this is a little different from when we normally come down here to see you guys and to speak with you guys. So bear with me, please. I just want to start off and just say, majuksus, majusatuka, kaniyo yaset, Jesus Torango. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Steinberg, you know, esteemed members of the City Council and fellow citizens of Sacramento. It's truly an honor to stand before you today, knowing we are on the precipice of something great, an opportunity that can bring profound economic, social, cultural benefits to this great city. The most outstanding answer to our community's longstanding question of what to do with the rail yards infill project. This isn't just an answer for one business or company, or even one government, but for everyone in this region. During the amazing announcement and celebration on Thursday, I reminded you all of what an important and valuable partner Wilton Rancheria is to this project. This value isn't about money. It's not about capital. Our value comes with the tie that our people have to this land since time memorial. Simply put, we don't rent here in Sacramento. This is our traditional territory, and we are not going anywhere. Wilton Rancheria has a deep connection to the Sacramento region, and we share a strong commitment to the prosperity and the well-being of all people who call this area home. As part of this commitment, we are proud to stand before you today and ask for your support so that we may move forward to build a stadium here in our city. This is more than just a stadium. It is a chance to create jobs, stimulate the local economy, invest in community development, and share culture. We all know how much soccer unites people from all walks of life, from diverse backgrounds, and from all parts of the world. But by supporting this project, we are not just investing in a sports venue. We are investing in the heart of our community, in the future of our youth, and in a legacy of unity that will endure for generations to come. Wilton Rancheria is deeply committed to building partnerships that strengthen our shared values. And this project represents the kind of collaboration that can make Sacramento a national leader in both sport and community development. We are excited by the opportunity to bring this vision to life. The benefits of this stadium extend far beyond the soccer field. The stadium will serve as a hub for entertainment, cultural events, and gatherings that will enrich the social fabric of our region. It will create a space for young athletes to aspire, for families to gather, and for the visitors to come from near and far to experience the best of what Sacramento has to offer. Today, we ask for your support in making this vision a reality. Let's build something together that reflects the energy, the diversity, and the future of Sacramento. A soccer stadium in this city will be a victory, not only for sports fans, but for all of us who believe in a brighter, more connected future in this region. Thongi Como, on behalf of Wilton Rancheria and my esteemed elected officials here. This is something that we wanted to make sure that we said here, in a good way, in a good form. But Mayor, I also want to go off cuff a little bit and just simply say, "Thank you." You know, again, at these times, you know, there's certain peoples that get the accolades. Well, in this case, it's truly warranted for your work in keeping this thing alive. And I can't go without saying a deep thank you to Kevin Nagel as well, and his team, Todd especially. And as I did last Thursday, and I'm better today. I'm not going to cry today, I'm not going to cry tonight. But again, when I think of this deal and everything, all the work that was put into it, there's one name that comes to mind for me, and that's my cousin, Chris Franklin. And I want to tell you that he kept this thing alive. As this deal was unfolding, there were some tight turns, and there were some drops and whatnot. And it was because of him that Wilton Rancheria stayed on track, and we stayed the course. And so for that, you know, if this is on CNN or wherever it's going, I want to make sure the world knows that, you know, we have a great, great COO in Chris Franklin, and he's a big reason why we're standing here today. But most importantly, but most importantly, I also wanted to add to our citizens that are at home. And we're a government as well. And so there's a lot of questions that we're going to answer for our citizens in the future. But again, this is what governments do. We invest back into our community for the benefit of your citizens. And our citizens, if you could hear us, know that your council and your elected officials, we did some hard thinking, and this is an amazing thing, not only for our citizens, but this great region. So again, Thongi Como, Mayor, City Council, definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beautifully said. Marco, do we have DRV now?
One more.
Yeah, Denton Kelly.
Yeah, so I would like to bring up Denton Kelly with Downtown Rail Yard Venture.
This has been a path and a journey, hasn't it, Mayor?
Yes.
And Howard, and City Manager. I want to thank all of you. I want to thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for your commitment to, in partnership, on our project as a whole, and for this specific project with Wilton, SAC Republic, and DRV. And we made it. It wasn't easy, but we made it. I want to thank Howard, your staff. I know a bunch of them sit back here behind me. They've been a pleasure to work with. And you and your team rolling your sleeves up in a very tight timeframe, a very challenging project to put together. It's that collaborative spirit that made this outcome and this partnership possible. Also, just want to thank my team sitting here to my left, Josh, Frank, and Jay, who've been very involved on a day-to-day basis, doing all the heavy lifting, and allowing me to stand up here and have this opportunity to thank all of you. I had a mentor one time who told me, on a very tough project, when I told him something, he says, "Well, did you say it's impossible? Or is it almost impossible?" I said, "Hmm, almost impossible." He's like, "Well, then it's possible." And I can tell you that many times this project required that mindset. Some might call that an indomitable mindset. I learned it is make the almost impossible possible. And here we are. And I can tell you, probably 160 years ago, when our country's most ambitious infrastructure project started here in Sacramento at the rail yards, the Transcontinental Railroad, they had a similar spirit. And I can only imagine some young person, man or woman, asked his boss something similar, and that boss probably had the same answer. Then it's possible. And today, we're here to vote on something that is going to embark on forging ahead with our region's most ambitious redevelopment project that we've seen to date. And we couldn't be more excited. So here we have a rendering of the Central Shops Plaza, the paint shop, the future of our music venue, 3,600-seat music venue. This is going to form the future gateway and entry from downtown, from SAC Valley Station, and connect into the rail yards, into Kaiser, into the SAC Republic Stadium. And this will form the soul of our project. This is the project's history, and this is the project's future. This is where we'll have concerts in the paint shop. We'll have festivals. We'll have farmers markets in the plaza. And this will be a space that is enjoyed by everyone in our community. Active projects. We all know about Kaiser, $2.5 billion investment, starting next year, 5,000 permanent, high-wage, private jobs. We know about the stadium. But DRV, we've led with housing. We have 495 housing units completed, or almost complete. 219 of those are affordable. Housing is an important piece of infrastructure. It's not just what goes in the ground. It's the unit that people have to ultimately shelter and live in. And with this economic development package we have worked collaboratively on, those same residents will actually have a place to walk to, to enjoy a game, enjoy a concert, have dinner, walk to a park. Infrastructure, the not-so-interesting part of what we do, but ultimately very necessary. It's a heavy lift, and it's expensive. We have invested over $120 million in infrastructure in the rail yards already to date over the last five years. Were it not for this effort by our team, working with the city, we would not be sitting here today having this discussion. Infrastructure is necessary to set up economic development for these big wins. And this, again, another perspective and rendering on the Central Shops, the plaza, the paint shop. Just imagine, in three years, we will all be enjoying this. It'll be historic in more than just one way. It'll be lively because of the entertainment. And the rail yards as a whole, most importantly, it is historic, it's our home, and it's the future of this city. And we appreciate your support for everything tonight. So let's go Sacramento. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Denton, and thank you to the Indomitable team for your presentations. So wrapping this up. Staff is recommending that council pass a motion to approve the term sheet. And then, if approved, some next steps would be definitive documents early next year, a signed package early next year as well, expansion of the EIFD and the purchase and sale agreement of the SVS parcels early next year, and then the initiation of construction for the stadium and entertainment venue middle to end of next year. With that concludes my presentation, and happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. I know, how many people do we have signed up for public test? We have 15, I think, per our usual protocol. Let's hear the public testimony, and then we'll open it up to the City Council for questions and debate and discussion. Thank you all for your presentations, appreciate it.
As the mayor mentioned, I have 15 speakers. I'll call a few. Michael Alt, Mike Testa, Josh Steele, Alexander Hampton, Michael Andrew Barnbaum.
You get the mics again. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, City Manager, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. So, Mike and I were sitting next to each other and talking a little bit about this. It's hard to follow something like that when you have spent years hoping for this kind of development. You know, we talk a lot over the years on the opportunities for the rail yards. We've had tours of people from other cities that have come here, and when you look and you realize, the rail yards in itself doubles the size of the central business district. And the feeling always was, how do you get it to complement what's taking place downtown? How do you get it to be something that is additive to that experience? When you talk about the agreement that's been made today, obviously, our Board of Directors supports it. This will be an exciting amenity that is going to add to the, I think, momentum of the last several years. We've seen Golden One, we've seen new hotels, we've seen a convention center, we've seen incredible events. I think shortly we'll be hearing, hopefully, about some incredible investment on our waterfront project. But, you know, we've got an opportunity to remake this city. Cities are defined by their urban cores. And when you talk about why come to Sacramento, this is another element of why people are going to choose to come here. For decades, this rail yards has presented an opportunity. We want to acknowledge absolutely the leadership of the Wilton Rancheria tribe, Kevin Nagel, Todd Donovan. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my past Board Chair, Denton Kelly, and his entire DVR team for doing this. But we've got a chance to do something, not just special, but we've got a chance to create a sense of identity for Sacramento that we have all believed in. We have invested in this community collectively, but this is an opportunity, I think truly, to take Sacramento to the next level. You've done an incredible job, Mayor. You've led this effort. The city is in debt to that, downtown is. On behalf of our 700 property and business owners, we're excited to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, City Manager, Chairman, my name is Mike Testa. I'm the President and CEO of Visit Sacramento. This item that's being discussed tonight is incredibly exciting for Sacramento and offers a great reminder of the post-COVID recovery in our city. January of 2020 was a time of great momentum in Sacramento. Our hotels were seeing record occupancy, despite the fact that our convention center was closed for an expansion. Our three-day aftershock festival was growing, and we had just signed our first contract with Ironman. And almost five years after the pandemic started, our expanded Safe Credit Union Convention Center will host more events this year than it did in 2018. Our city-collected hotel tax revenues has grown by almost $5 million. Our now-four-day aftershock festival is the largest hard rock festival on the West Coast, while its post-COVID-created country music sibling in Golden Sky continues to build. The A's will play Major League Baseball here for the next three seasons, and Sacramento's Ironman is now the largest Ironman competition in North America. This rejuvenation of our rail yards, this investment in our community, reminds me of that pre-COVID momentum and excitement that was so real five years ago. This progress signals to me that Sacramento is beyond the idea of being on our way to picking up where we'd left off. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, City Manager Chan, Chairman Tarango, and the community-focused tribe of the Wilton Rancheria, Denton Kelly and DRV, and Kevin Nagel and Todd Donovan of the Republic FC for never giving up on what could be in Sacramento. Visit Sacramento wholeheartedly encourages this council to approve the Sacramento Republic FC preliminary term sheet. Thank you.
Josh Steele, then Alexander Hampton.
Good evening, fellow City Council members and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Josh Steele. It's an honor for me to be standing here in front of you, being able to ask you to support the Sacramento Republic Stadium on your term sheet. This is such an honor, because not even six months ago, I was an incarcerated individual in the California Penitentiary. I was incarcerated for 20 years, 14 of which I served at Folsom State Prison. It was at Folsom Prison in 2017 that I first connected with the Sacramento Republic. They came into the prison to play a soccer game with inmates who were serving time for a crime that they have committed. This act of community giveback to us inmates who haven't felt a sense of humanity in decades. We felt human again. It was an absolutely amazing day. For the next five years while I was at Folsom Prison, the Sacramento Republic came in, once a month, year on end, to play a monthly soccer game. Every month, it was my duty to set up the field for the monthly event. Also, I had to pick 10 to 15 inmates to play every month. This consisted of a process of picking guys that were doing right and trying to transform themselves into a better individual, ones that have shown remorse for their crimes. I shared this process once with Kevin Verdic, the Community Investment Manager with the Sacramento Republic at the time. His response to us, "How about the ones that can reach through sports? Maybe sports is where they can begin their change." He was right on that. There were many. Then when they got the chance to play and interact with the Sac Republic, their eyes were opened and decided to transform themselves into a better human being. 33 seconds left, wow. Moving on, over the years, I've seen the Republic on the news perform a community outreach in so many ways. Toys for Tots, canned food drives, and soccer parcs, just to name a few. Recently, they had a week of service that consisted of service transforming veterans' homes, helping feed women and children at a women's center, and contributing to a Sacramento food bank. I continue on and on with this, but do not want to take up too much of your time. They also gave me my first job upon my release. Where I'm going with all of this, I think it's inevitable that the Sacramento Republic continues to build the city of Sacramento and its surrounding cities into a better place.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
You did a really good job. Thank you so much.
So, Alexander, then Michael Barnbaum.
Good evening. Good evening, council, mayor. Alexander Hampton, North Carolina carpenters. I represent over 2,000 carpenters here in the Sacramento area. The North Carolina carpenters are very excited to see this project moving forward. North Carolina carpenters are also looking forward to working with the developers and owners of this project. We must always remember that the prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, and local hire should be required on projects of this magnitude. Let's look out for the workers. Let's create jobs. Let's move forward. Let's go Sacramento.
Michael Andrew Barnbaum, then Sharon Anderson, then Daniel Tyree.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. When you have the heart and hustle of the city of Sacramento, we're never going to give you up, we're never going to let you down, we're never going to turn around and hurt you. Eight years. Mayor, I want to thank you for all the chutzpah you had to put up through all that. Thank you. This will define your legacy of the terms you've served as mayor. As the previous mayor from 10 and a half years ago, the term sheet at Doco and Golden One defined his legacy. So I want to say thank you to everybody that worked on this. This is a huge economic catalyst project for the city of Sacramento. It is another chapter of how we work to Crown Downtown. And it is also being a mixed-use development, and not just a stadium project for soccer. You could see that this project is bigger than soccer. And that when we come together to work as long as we have on something to come before you tonight, we can certainly say in a city that we will have a project where people can thrive, come downtown, not just for work, but for entertainment, and live in a city where more is possible. Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Michael Barnbaum, one of the founders of Crown Downtown, member of Team Flow Volunteers, and I approve this message.
That was good. You can't follow that. I'm Sharon Anderson. I live in Elk Grove, and I've visited the Sky River Casino, and I love it. And I really appreciate the tribe for stepping up and building us that, and then also for stepping in and making it possible with Kevin Nagel and Todd and all of you to give us this stadium that we've been dreaming of since Sac Soccer Days in 2013. I have a million scarves. It took me forever to decide which ones to wear tonight, but I made sure to wear the, yes, the tribe scarf. So I hope you all, like, give a huge thumbs up to this term sheets, plural, from what we've just got educated on. And, you know, go Sacramento. I think Sac Republic is, it's been my home. I used to work there years ago, and we're just so excited to finally have a place to call home. Get those shovels in the ground, let's go. I heard something like, "We're going out there tomorrow, you need helpers." We'll all be there. Your fans are, we're ready, we're so ready for this. Anyhow, take my money.
So, Daniel, then Macworthy.
Hi, I'm Daniel Tyree, proud resident of Sacramento. I call myself a Sacramento file. I'm a photographer. I've been taking pictures of events, activities, the wonderful people we have in this city for years. I'm a fourth generation, the fifth and sixth are coming up right behind me as far as my family goes here in Sacramento. I'm a charter season ticket holder of Sacramento Republic, and have been a charter member of the Tower Bridge Battalion since the inaugural season. I've read everything I can regarding the term sheet and the plan to build a stadium and entertainment district in the rail yards, which happens to be a place that my grandfather and his brothers worked, a second-generation Sacramentoans. So much like the tribe, this land is very special to us, and I couldn't be more happier with them coming on as caretakers for this going forward. Places like Golden One, Heart Health Park, the Convention Center, the Memorial, Ace of Spades, Harlow's, that's where we meet. Our local restaurants is where we break bread. Another outlet for sports and the performing arts will be one more jewel in our hometown that continues to punch well above its weight, thanks to so many in this room and some who can't be here today. I believe this is a fair plan for the city, our citizens, the Wilton Rancheria, and the club I support, the Sacramento Republic. I hope you will vote to approve the term sheet, and respectfully ask the club's new caretakers, the Wilton Rancheria, the first North American tribe to have a major stake in a men's professional sports team, which is frickin' amazing, to include and leverage our passionate fan base. I believe I'm speaking for the vast majority of people who fill the stands and have for over 10 years. We want to help, we want to have input, and in us, you'll have no more loyal partner. We thank you for stepping up and ensuring a bright future for the beautiful game in the city we are proud to call home. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Macworthy. Following Mr. Worthy is DeShawn Spencer, then Lambert, then Devin Strecker.
I wish you guys well. I wish you well. It's gonna be a hard trip. Economic-wise, I came here at 19 years old. 59 years of business I own the janitorial service. People that I affiliated with taught me, like McCurry Cam, the Rotary Club, the grocery guy, Italians, that's who I went, Kiro fashion, that's how I learned. People, big dollars, call here, they don't excite me, because I talk every day. I just talk to somebody in Nevada, big money. I wish for big money, too. But you got to have people that understand Sacramento is very, very low across the board of education, of finance. They don't have the income. That's not only black people, it's just all the way across. Go to the Rotary Club, go to McCurry Cam, talk to him. Bill Berger, he'll tell you, his son will tell you, Bill dead. You got to understand the enterprise. If you're going to not have competition, you're, it gonna be sad. It gonna be sad. America now, the antitrust laws is getting me to turn. My man back in Washington DC, a businessman. Centurions states, you all investing at a bad time, but I wish you well. Nobody said when we won championships that, to have athletes, you got to have people like James Worthy, a realtor man, in LA, you gotta pay him. Soccer, my grandkids played soccer in China when my daddy, Danny Morales, was in the raincoat. One of those kids now is a doctor in Massachusetts, a medical doctor. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. DeShawn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm DeShawn Spencer. I'm the Business Development Coordinator at the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and support this transformative project. The new Sacramento Republic FC Stadium and Entertainment District represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to strengthen our community, create jobs, and transform the economic landscape of our city. The rail yards is one of the largest infield developments in the country, and it's clear that this stadium and district will be a much-needed catalyst for investment in our downtown. We have seen firsthand how strategic investments in sports and entertainment can catalyze growth. The Golden One Center is a prime example. It revitalized downtown Sacramento, spurred new business, increased tourism, and brought renewed energy to our city. This project will go just as far. The economic impact of this project is significant. It will create thousands of construction jobs and permanent positions in hospitality, retail, and event management, while supporting local businesses and stimulating investment and growth in our downtown, all while solidifying Sacramento's reputation as the premier location for sports, culture, and entertainment. An historic element of this project is the involvement of the Wilton Rancheria tribe as the majority owner of the Sacramento Republic FC, marking the first instance of a Northern American tribe owning a men's professional sports team. So we've already made history. Approving this deal means investing in our community's future so we can make history again. The Greater Sacramento Economic Council would like to give a special thank you to Kevin Nagel, Mayor Steinberg, and the Kelly family for their unwavering commitment to this effort. Your dedication to the city's growth and progress is invaluable. Thank you for your consideration and dedication to our city's progress. By approving this deal, we can take a bold step forward for Sacramento's future. Let's do this, and let's do this together. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lambert, then Devin Strecker, then Michael Tavares, Amir Deere, Andrew Gross-Gaiton, and then Marbella Sala.
Yes, I would like to say, first of all, to Wilton Rancheria, I want to make sure I spell it correctly, that I am a native of this city. My parents moved here in 1946, so when I heard Chairman Tarango say, "It's more than just money," it touched me, because my parents moved here in 1946, and I wanted to just give some advice to Wilton Rancheria. I'm hearing everything about benefits and progress, but as a native, I studied this city. And I'm asking Wilton Rancheria to make sure you study the soil, where you're going to build this. I heard a paint shop. I also know this city, and if trains are running in and out of a rail yard, make sure that soil is healthy, because I heard you mention your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren, they're going to have the results if you don't make the right decision about the soil. So study that soil. That's why they have the EPA. So study that. And I wish you well, and it's your land anyway. So it's your ancestors' land. And remember that some of your ancestors received blankets with smallpox in them. So when I say study that land, I don't care how controversial it is. Study the soil. I haven't heard one report on the soil. You must study the soil. Thank you.
Evan?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'm the Executive Director of the River District, as well as a resident, so I spend a lot of time in this area, and we're very, very excited to support this item moving forward. Obviously, it's going to have a huge catalytic impact on the River District. We already have a number of amazing projects that have come to fruition with your support, including the Museum of Science and Curiosity, the Maylie State Office Complex, and Mirasol Village, and the Haley Apartments, just to name a few. Every week, people come up to the River District, and they're surprised that it does not look like what they expected it to, because they have not been there for a while, and they didn't know everything that's been happening. So this is just another huge, important component to really build up the central core of Sacramento, to create a dense, walkable neighborhood served by public transportation. It's going to be a huge return on investment for you as the city as we build up. And so we're just very excited to support this. I really want to thank you for all the hard work you put into it. Also, Wilton Rancheria and DRV, it's just a huge Herculean effort to get to this point, so we're very happy about it. But also just to thank Sac Republic FC, whether they've come out and, you know, connected with the kids at Mirasol Village, they've invited our public space team members to their games. Some of these are unhoused people who would never get to go to a professional sports game otherwise. So they've just been an amazing partner to the River District, and we're so happy to have their stadium right next door to us. So thank you so much.
Michael Tavares, then Amir Dean. Michael Tavares, then Amir Dean.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Tavares. I founded Crown Downtown, and this brings back a lot of memories for me and my friends, coming out to council meetings every Tuesday, week after week, month after month, year after year, to help support the city in its efforts to keep the Kings and build the Golden One Center that we call Bigger Than Basketball. And there was a documentary about it where they asked me a couple of questions. One was, "Does things ever come easy for Sacramento?" My reply was, "No, but that's the way we like it." Two, one that didn't make the documentary was, "What's next for Sacramento?" And my reply was, "A soccer stadium in the rail yards." So, that's why my friends are here today, to lend our support for the recommendation to pass a motion approving the Sacramento Republic FC preliminary term sheet. It's gonna revitalize the rail yards like it did in the area where Doco is now, new development around the stadium, including residential, both affordable and market value, commercial, possibly a hotel, and transportation development, thirty-six-hundred-seat live entertainment facility, jobs, lots of them, community benefits program, including charitable contributions, free community youth soccer clinics, community fields, complimentary tickets, and my job is, as a college counselor, I work with many college students, helping them get ready to live that dream. But the Sacramento Republic have been great community partners for the last ten years. Anytime I need tickets for my students, or to provide them with internships, job shadowing, informational interviews, they're on top of it, and they reply quickly and connect with my students, especially with my veteran students as well. The other thing, too, is a lot of social, economical, and cultural reasons, including civic pride, so I really want to thank the city of Sacramento for their negotiating and helping with this, also with Kevin Nagel and the Jackson, I'm sorry, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe. Sorry, I got some other things on my mind here.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
To help make Sacramento a better place to work, live, and play. This is bigger than soccer. Thank you.
Thank you. Amir? Amir, and then Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Chairman, Council. My name's Amr Dean. I am the President of Unite Here Local 49, the Hospitality Workers Union. We represent about 5,000 workers, hospitality workers throughout the region, and I was struck by my testimony, testa's testimony. Hospitality is booming in Sacramento, and we are really excited about that. We are really excited to be partners and an essential piece in that, and when I say "we," I mean the cooks, and the dishwashers, and the bartenders, and the servers who do the hospitality work. That's who we represent. We are excited that the Republic has the potential for a new home. We are excited that MLS is on the horizon. We are excited at development in the rail yards. However, at this time, I'm here to say that we are not in support of this project yet. It's happened quickly. We have not been consulted. In the last iteration, back in 2016, we were, labor was consulted, we were more of a partner in the project, we had written assurances, and we look forward to having the same relationship. We look forward to meeting with the partners, but at this point, with what we know about labor's place in this term sheet, which is not on the term sheet, and the conversations we've had, we're not yet in support.
But you're not in opposition either?
We are looking forward to talking with all parties.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have two more speakers, Andrew, then Marbella.
Good evening, Council and Chairman. And I would say Council, but I haven't worked with any of you folks yet. Andrew Gross-Gaitan, I'm the Vice President of United Service Workers West. We also represent over 50,000 service workers who service California's properties, about 10,000 of them service the major stadiums and arenas in the state, the Dodgers, the Padres, the Giants, the 49ers, the Raiders, and most of those stadiums and arenas have a longstanding relationship with us in terms of making sure that the men and women who make it possible for the stadiums to operate, the people who clean them, the people who handle the security, the people who handle maintenance and setup, parking, grounds, that those folks can also afford to go to those events, that they can afford to have a home in the community where they work, that they can afford to bring their kids to the doctor. So, as Amir said, we can't yet get behind the projects. I can tell you, as a grandfather, I've got a six-year-old who's in his second season of soccer, I've got an eighteen-year-old granddaughter who's doing her last season as a varsity soccer player, and the Republic League, for us and for our family, has been just a fantastic resource. For the thousands of members we represent in Sacramento, many of whom are Spanish speakers, to have a local soccer stadium is going to be an incredible improvement in quality of life for them and for their families. So, we're excited about the project, and we hope we have the opportunity to work with Wilton Rancheria, to make sure that the permanent jobs created here also help create prosperity for the people who are gonna do the work at the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marbella?
Good evening, and thank you. I just want to thank you all for this wonderful opportunity for our community. I'm Marbella, and I'm with the Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association. I'm just right across the river from all of this happening, and I think it's wonderful. It's gonna be great for our community, and I'm following up what some of the other speakers have said, is that our children, especially north of the river, are gonna be so excited about the opportunity to come and watch football in Sacramento, and what I just want to, all of you to keep in mind, is that a lot of our kids north of the river, their families are struggling to put food on the table, to go to work, to get gas, to put in their car, et cetera. So, find a way to make it very extremely affordable, accessible to our kids, because we all know that athletic activities and sports are protective factors, and them being able to attend a game and to have an intentional relationship with our Twin Rivers School District, intentional, where there's intentional summer programs, or for, you know, for Sacramento Republic, and I know they do a lot, and they have been once to Niño's Park with our kids, and they loved it, but it'd be intentional, use some of that EIFD monies to make a very intentional program for those kids north of the river. So, just keep that in mind, and I'm excited, and we're excited about this opportunity, and we are supportive of this. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the public testimony. I want to thank all of the members of the public for coming out tonight and making sure that your voices are heard. We now turn it over to the City Council, the people who are entrusted by the people, to make these decisions for comments, debate, discussion, and hopefully, action. I start with Councilmember Valenzuela, and I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Mayor Maple, and Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming out here tonight, and thank you, Sacramento Republic. I wasn't born a soccer fan, but I've become one, living in Sacramento, even taking that very ill-advised twenty-four-hour trip to Orlando for the finals game with my colleague, Councilmember Wang. I definitely paid for that one for a few days, but was glad I did it, and I'm really happy for you all, I'm really happy for Wilton Rancheria, I'm happy for the fans, and I'm really happy for the future of the rail yards. So, I'll start by saying that. I will also say that I'm one who believes that there's honestly no limit to what this country needs to give to tribal people in exchange for what was done to us, and so I think this is a textbook example of a debt owed, of you asserting a very rightful leadership role in a very important project, and I am glad to be there, to be here, to see this. So, I'll start by saying I'm not opposed to this term sheet moving forward either, but I do have some thoughts, because I think regardless of how we frame this, this is public money going into a big project, and, you know, I represent the district directly south of this area, you know, I wasn't involved in the negotiation for this, but I think it's undeniable now, I hope we can all just admit, you know, that these big projects do have impacts. It's not always good, you know, sometimes we see displacement, sometimes we see people not get jobs, sometimes we see kids not get access, and that's why we have these processes in public spaces, so that when we approve public financing, we're talking about public benefit in a really direct way, and I was disappointed when I read the language of this, that it felt like we paid a lot less attention to the community benefits piece in this than we have other EIFDs that are smaller than this. I mean, when I think about Aggie Square, when I even think about the North Natomas Hospital, there were very specific language in there that really front-loaded community benefits. We talked about with Golden One Center, we targeted zip codes, we talked about who was gonna get access to those jobs, what those jobs are gonna look like, and had a great amount of detail that I don't see here in this document, and that troubles me, but it's something that I do think we can fix, and I think that we can move forward tonight and be really deliberate about how we work out those details and what that process looks like, to ensure the community feels very protected in what happens, that we're not just saying a hundred tickets, we're saying a hundred tickets, sometimes the kids in Northgate, right? You know, we're saying a hundred tickets to the kids that are gonna need that the most, and we're being really deliberative as to how this project will interact with the community that's here. So, I have a few asks, and I will move this item forward, but my asks are simple. One, which is a little bit of a tangent, I'd like to add fossil fuels to the naming rights prohibition section, and we right now just have tobacco and a couple other items listed as we shall not name after, and I'd like to see fossil fuel companies named on that list as well. I would hate for this to become Chevron Stadium or Chevron something, right? So, I just want to make sure that that's added to this list. And then when it comes to, and I guess this is a question for Leslie and Mike, in the document, we refer to the rail yards EIFD Public Finance Authority. Is that the same thing as the stadium area Public Finance Authority that we already have established?
Would be the same, because this is an expansion of the existing EIFD.
Okay, great. I wanted to say that on the record, A, to make sure it was clear, because those are two separate titles for them, and so I want to make sure we know which is which. So, that authority currently has three of my colleagues, the Mayor Pro Tim Talamontes, Councilmember Guerra, and Councilmember Jennings on it, and two public representatives. So, the idea here would be to add one representative from organized labor, and to add one representative from the immediate community to that body, and to make that body be the place where a community benefits agreement is worked out for the next few months. This won't be settled for at least six months, that's plenty of time, to have some public meetings, that's plenty of time for this authority to work out some detail as to what this could look like, so that when the final sheets come back to council in a few months, and when this is finalized, it wouldn't slow it down at all, it would just add more meat to the bones and really add some substance to this section. And so, that would be my ask as part of this motion, removing fossil fuel, adding fossil fuels to the naming rights prohibition list, and expanding the rail yards EIFD to include organized labor and another representative from the community, and for them to work out some details on community benefits to bring back, because I trust my colleagues who are in that space to do that well. I know Councilmember Guerra was obviously deeply involved in the Aggie Square EIFD negotiation process, so I know he knows how this works. You know, when we approved that, we said it was gonna be a model, I was really proud of some of the terms in that agreement, and I think we could do that again here for a much bigger EIFD, in a way that still honors the commitment that all of the partners are making here tonight, and also ensures that the community has some assurance and detail as to what we're getting in exchange for this investment.
So, I just want to say, I appreciate it, appreciate the input and also the suggestions, and I think at the right time, those suggestions, the two on fossil fuel and on adding a seat to the EIFD, could be very constructive suggestions, certainly on a values basis, I agree on the fossil fuel issue. I don't think this is the time to add that, though. There are going to be a half dozen or more opportunities for the council, next council, it won't include me, and I know it won't include you as well, to be able to approve the various pieces of this that will allow some of these discussions to occur over time. On the labor piece, for example, I and Mr. Dean came on up here, there's no question that there are going to be important and productive discussions with organized labor, both on the trade side and also on the operation side. This is Sacramento. Those conversations will happen, but this term sheet, even though it is not binding, I would say at this point has been so delicately negotiated that I just cannot support, respectfully, I think the intent is really good, any changes to this term sheet, just these term sheets, because I think it will then allow other suggestions and changes to be made here. I think the discussions are totally appropriate, but I think for later stages of the discussion, when they're actually binding votes on all of these provisions, that's just my point of view.
So, you're saying that we can't give direction to staff to work on community, I mean, because the EIFD isn't being created as part of the term sheet, it already exists?
Maybe I'm not clear on what you're suggesting. If you're suggesting that staff and the parties actually look into these issues for further discussion, I think that's fine. I just don't want to amend or bind us to amending even the non-binding term sheet to include those provisions at this point, for the reasons that I stated, but if it's to have staff look at these issues and talk to the parties, I think that's fine.
I mean, because more will come back to this council, and so the idea is a lot more detail is gonna come back to this future council, like, let's work this out, let's use the EIFD committee we have to do that, let's consider adding these additional seats, which is a separate, this is not a part of the term sheet, this is our committee, we've established that it exists, so we're saying, you know, having labor in that room, having other community voices in that room, which is a public space.
I want labor in every room, but even at this point, I'm not comfortable adding it to a motion in terms of the statement of intent, because I just think we've got to get this baseline done with a very clear and public, I'm saying, shout it to the rooftops, everybody involved in this, on the business side, will sit down in good faith with organized labor. This is Sacramento. We're a labor town. That's what it is, to have those discussions in good faith, and to figure out whether it's the EIFD angle as a suggestion, as one way to approach it, or other ways that you might do it. It's just a matter of sequencing timing here for me.
Mayor, if I may, just as a reminder, we are bringing back the definitive documents in the first quarter of next year, so there's time between now and then to have all these conversations.
Understood. Right, that's my point. So, again, I just maybe I'm asking for clarity in terms of what the motion is. If the motion is to ask staff and the parties to discuss these items over the next couple of months and consider them, I think that's fine. I just don't want to make it part of definitive direction, "You shall bring this back," that's all, for the reasons I've stated. Yeah?
I could hear from my colleagues as well before.
Okay, that's fine.
We don't need to go back and forth.
Okay, that's fine. Vice Mayor?
I'm actually interested in clarity on the motion, too, just so I know what's on the table. Is it just move?
I can withdraw my motion, because I was actually trying to move direction, but the mayor's objected to that, so, I mean, I would like there to be a process after this that discusses community benefits in more detail with interested parties, and I thought the rail yards EIFD Public Finance Committee was the best place to do that, because it already exists and it's a public body, but if there's another way to do this, you know, I'm concerned for the impact on the central city and would like there to be a conversation. And I'd also like fossil fuels added to the naming rights prohibition.
Okay.
So, there's no motion on the table now?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate it, because I think it's important that we all have the information as we move forward. I'm not gonna bury the lead about where I'm at on this, on this particular proposal, and I've been, it's been really quiet, the journey, watching, even in the short time that I've been on the council, watching the work that you've done, Mayor Steinberg, and not just days, weeks, and months, but literally years, with the partners in this room, many of which have been thanked, and I thank them as well. You know, this is an exciting day, I think, from Hughes Stadium to Heart Health Park and now to the rail yards. It's a big day for fans, and my colleague is right, we do have a lot of work ahead of us. There are gonna be many, many, many conversations about what this looks like, the details, how it works out. I also, too, share concerns about how this works, how this is gonna work with our workers, how this is gonna work with our community benefits, but I know that where I'm at right now is that today's not the day for me. I know that we're gonna have, and the council that moves forward, a lot of time to have these discussions in partnership with everyone who's here, because that's what we do. We work in partnership, and we're gonna make sure that everyone's in the room and a part of these discussions, so I'm really looking forward to that. One of the things that is exciting for me as well, being a history nerd, is that this is the terminus of the Transcontinental Railroad. This is a very historic site for the city of Sacramento, and it has been sad to see that it has been languishing for many, many years, and I am thrilled to see the amount of investment that's gone. I took note of 120 million. Thank you for that investment, because I would hate to see this really valuable property in terms of our historic heritage. in terms of our historic heritage not be invested in. I really want to thank Wilton Rancheria for all of the work that you've put into this, and I know it wasn't easy. And I know that there were a lot of times when this could have fallen apart, but truly everybody was committed to making it work, and I'm grateful for that. And so there's one other piece that I really want to point out, and so one of the many roles that I serve on in this capacity is I'm on the Board of the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, the CCJPA. And the idea that we are going to have a transit hub in the future with the land that the city will be acquiring as part of this deal is really exciting, because we need to be investing more in public transit. It's a huge part, when I think about creating a city for young people, so that young people not only go to college here, but stay here and raise their families here, I think about things like this music venue. I think about having public transit. I think about having pedestrian walkways and all the things that we know are important to that. And so this is all a piece of that pie. The other thing that I think is important, not directly connected right now, but, you know, we have two beautiful rivers that run through the city, and it's a big part of who we are. So I hope that whatever moves forward also really focuses on the waterfront, because when you travel to cities our size across the nation and other places in the world, they invest in their waterfronts, and they are a place where community comes together and works and plays. And so I'd love to see that as a part of this, but I'm thrilled to see this. I want to thank, thank you, Mayor, again. Thank you to City Manager and the entire team for making the nearly impossible possible. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary term sheet, as is knowing that we are going to continue these conversations as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Maple. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to get the boring stuff out of the way first. You know, while this is a celebration, it's also our due diligence as a council to make sure that the city is getting a good deal and to understand the terms and the financing of an EIFD, which really is, let's talk about it, it's financing. It's looking at something that we have to reinvest and redo as a community. And Leslie, you have been in the history books for Sacramento as part of every EIFD the city has been a part of, from Aggie Square, Golden One, Innovation Park, which is part of my district that I worked with you personally on, on an EFID term sheet, and the rail yards. So this is not new for the city, looking at a reinvestment area that has languished. It's a redevelopment area. So the one question I have is, you've got experience, are there any terms out of the norm in this EIFD term sheet that would be called out differently than what we've negotiated in the others?
No, I think it's very consistent with how we've negotiated others. We're basically using the property tax generated by the projects that they're going to be building to reinvest in this area. So I think it's very consistent. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kaplan.
Now, is the city fronting money for the EIFD?
The only money that the city is fronting for the EIFD is some consultant work to get it off the ground and to expand it, but that's just a small amount, given the large amount that they're going to be investing.
And with EFIDs, when kind of a boundary is created, because this has been asked about mine and Innovation Park and the redevelopment, can money created from the tax base of the innovation, or of the district be used outside?
The legal is that it can be used outside the district, you just have to show a tangible benefit to the district itself.
So if any investment from the tax base that comes from building this is used outside, then we have to go to our, I'm an attorney, sorry, we have to go to the legal definition, which tangible means. And have we defined what tangible means?
The law itself is not that specific as to what tangible means, but I think we would want to show that there was a connection in terms of jobs or housing, something that would benefit the district as a whole.
So tangible could mean, like, I know with mine and Innovation Park, money is going to go to affordable housing. Can that be affordable housing all over the city or affordable housing in the area that has the district boundaries?
Well, we did ask the same question when we formed Aggie Square, and the more conservative view is that it should be generally in the proximity to where the project is versus a citywide designation. That was the decision by the legal team at that time.
Thank you. I think it's important, and I really appreciate, Leslie, Mike Jasso, city staff, because as much as we all want to celebrate, we have to still make sure what we're doing is legal and it passes muster, because, gosh darn it, Mayor, not everybody likes what we do sometimes.
Never the case.
But I really want to thank city staff, because this is a financing agreement. And it does, as you said, Mayor, bring up where this is private individuals, private entities, a own sovereign government who can decide how they spend their money deciding to partner with Sacramento to make this so. And I think that bears acknowledgement, because while it is the rail yards and we, as the city of Sacramento, take pride in all of that, this is a delicate balance of a term sheet where those who have invested their time and their energy, sovereign governments, private companies, Kevin Nagel, you're your own person hero, who have decided that this is a catalyst for a community benefit. And let's just talk a little bit, not only do we know that SacRepublic goes out to Folsom Prison, but since 2019, 772 player appearances in the community, 2,513 nonprofits have been engaged with. There have been 12 Futsal Courts opened, and over $2 million of donation and value to nonprofits since 2019 has been SacRepublic, of which I know SacRepublic will continue. And this is where I got to thank Chairman Tarango and the Wilton Rancheria Tribal Council, Vice Chairman, Chairwoman, Raquel, Kevin, Antonio, Leah, Annette, Mariah, Spencer, and Jay. You, as a council, are your sovereign nation and are dedicating to give to the city of Sacramento on your own land, with your own funds, so that you are part of the Sacramento family that was always yours, that was taken from you. With that, thank you. To my fellow Seattle University grad, from one attorney to another, sometimes it does take the attorney and the smooth moves to keep it going. Thank you. Thank you for never giving up hope. Todd, thank you for your very cool, calm, and never seemingly flappable personality. And believe me, I try. And, and thank you, and it can't, thanks can't be said enough, because you may not know that the lights were going to go out on SacRepublic until Kevin Nagel stepped in, days away, and you've stuck with it. I jokingly refer that we all know elephants carry a baby for 18 months. Sacramento kind of carried this baby for a really long time, and it's time to bring it to fruition. So I will say, together we rise, together we create, together we innovate, together we invest, together we are indomitable, unstoppable, a spirit that is strong, brave, and insurmountable. And Senator Ashby was right when she said we were just waiting for the right partner. So thank you, Wilton Rancheria, and everybody that made this happen. Thank you, Mayor, in your own indomitable way of never giving up. And thank you, City Manager Howard Chan, for poking to keep us all in the right direction when it seemed like the rails were going to come off. And thank you Denton Kelly and team for pulling everyone together. This is, this is what Sacramento is supposed to be. This really is about how we rise together as a community, as one. So thank you, and I'm all in.
Cue Councilmember Kaplan. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so proud to be a Sacramentoan today. I've been in Sacramento since 1986, and this day is probably the best day of my life to look at everything that was shown on the screen today and what will be the most ambitious development project in the city of Sacramento to ever take place, and to look at all the wonderful teammates that are now on my team, that I look forward to working with for years to come. So Chief Tarango, I heard you say that you're not going to cry today. And I just want to let you know, if you cry, I'm crying. Because I'm almost ready to cry right now, because these are not tears of sadness, these are tears of joy. And that's why I say this is the happiest day in my life to this point. I'm really excited about a couple of goals that I think will happen, that on the same day, I want to go to a Kings game during the daytime and a Republic game at night, and I want to be able to walk from one arena to one stadium. I'm excited about that. And in the process, enjoy everything in the middle and everything around it. That's a goal that I have. It's what I call my BHAG goals. So that's one goal. And then the second goal is all the kids who are playing in soccer leagues throughout the city and region of Sacramento, all the kids, that they will get the opportunity to go to a game and see someone who's doing what they do and say, I could do that, and then one day we come back and they are playing for the SacRepublic FC, and we're rooting them on. Those are the two goals that I have, on top of all the things as far as Kaiser, the stadium, the housing, the infrastructure, the central shops, the entertainment, all that. Those are the two goals I have, is kids who will benefit from this, knowing that they too can be on that field and play and provide entertainment for all of us for years to come. And so I congratulate everyone on the role that they played to get us to this point. I won't call out names, because they've already been called out, but you know who you are. This is the happiest day for me in the city of Sacramento, and I am proud to be a partner with you as we move forward in this venture.
Beautifully said. Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Well, thank you, Mayor, again, and I don't think you have to dream on that. I mean, the Republic FC has a great history of that. I just think about, from District Six, in College Greens, Cameron Owasi, who, you know, led our team to many victories as well. So that, I think, is check one already, but there are many more, many more to come. First, I just want to say again, you know, thank you to all of the partners, to who got us here, to our city staff who've been at this, the mayor's office, Scott, and the city manager's team on economic development here who moved this, to, you know, the Kellys, you know, how many times I've walked the rail yards over there and looked at those, the challenges and the issues. And also to, you know, the rail yards, I mean, has had a significant challenge over the years. So I do want to recognize, you know, our Congresswoman endorsement at SUI, because this was a super fun site that people thought would never be anything, but now it's going to be a gem in California. And to that point, I want to thank the, again, the, you know, Kevin Nagel and Todd for, and, you know, all your team at SacRepublic, because, you know, as a, as a family who, you know, we started going to Republic games without kids and now with kids, you know, every time we've called your office for help and the team from the people who work at the stadium, who work at, you know, at the shop, at your office, who are helping, you know, families enjoy a good time, it's always, always been a very positive experience. And I think that is just a tremendous, you know, message about an organization that cares about, about families. And our kid, I did grow up, you know, watching soccer, you know? And, and so, you know, it's interesting, because my kids also grew up, you know, as infants in the, it didn't matter how cold it was, and you saw a group of families there, all of them with their, you know, blankets and Republic blankets. And now our kids are, you know, are playing soccer themselves, and so they're excited to come to the clinics right before the game and then meet their friends. And so that family and that unity atmosphere that was talked about, how you bring people together, and how soccer brings people together, and how communities together from all over the region here in one epicenter, in one location, I mean, to me, that's extremely powerful. And that leads me to say thank you. Thank you to the chairman, thank you to the council members, and to the people of the Wilton Rancheria, and to your CFO, you know, for figuring out how to make this happen. I think one of the exciting things is that this is local ownership, from Kevin Nagel to, you know, our, you know, the community who, this is their ancestral land. The benefit of local ownership is that, is that it, it's committed to our people, committed to our fan base, committed to our community. So I have positive aspirations that some of the issues that were brought up, you know, we were farm workers and my mom cleaned houses, and so, you know, the soccer game was the place that we were excited to see people, excited to see our community. So I'm excited about the fact that we have local ownership, because that means that they care about our community, that we see each other all the time. And so we will figure out how to resolve our differences and our challenges together. Just some points of thoughts, the next mayor and council will come in. Every year, we look through the appointments. Thank you, Mayor, for appointing me as Chair of the EIFD for the rail yards. The next, the next mayor may choose to appoint the community members as members of labor, if they wish to as well. And I, I think that that may be a way to resolve this versus the mechanical, you know, structure of restructuring the entity. When we did the EIFD for Aggie Square, we chose a community member from District Five and one from District Six, because the community benefits agreement there recognized that it was both sides of Stockton Boulevard that would be impacted by it. And for those who are watching, the, what has occurred from that EIFD and that process moving forward is not only money for new housing, we just started the new families that are coming into 200 units of workforce housing on Stockton Boulevard, but we also, also help so many seniors and people whose homes are dilapidated to stay in their homes because of the displacement money that was, that came out of that solution. But none of that happened beforehand, like, we got to that point, we got to that solution. So I'm excited about where this journey takes us moving forward, and I, and I trust that, you know, the commitment here will move us forward for both our janitorial services, our hospitality services, our security services, because at the end of the day, these are the folks who are going to be, you know, here, supporting going to the soccer games, you know, going to support all of our endeavors here, who many of I know go to Sky River Casino as well, you know? So the location, I think, is probably one of the most exciting parts of this. You know, as much as I enjoy, you know, going with my kids, going to, again, Cal Expo, man, we get caught up on the 80 over the river, and it is just, it is a nightmare. And, you know, and you all know who are soccer fans, who are season ticket holders. It is like that stressful thing, you're like, looking at, like, I got to get out the door, you know, because if not, I'm going to get caught in the traffic. And, you know, for those of us that have gone down to El Grove or come up, like, the 99 is just as bad, you know, in that section. So I think the selection of this location, where you're going to have the light rail and Amtrak, and right next to the workforce, because coming out at 5:00, trying to then get to Cal Expo, like, this is going to be, we have so many people from throughout the region who work here, who come here. This is going to be the right place. And most importantly, as my raider over here, you know, I enjoyed getting on Amtrak. And when I got on Amtrak in Sacramento and went to Davis and up the hill, and then all of a sudden saw all the people from the West, you know, going to Oakland and getting off at the Coliseum and watching the A's or the Raiders, we're going to see people from the East and people from the West coming here for this location. We're going to see people from, you know, from, you know, Folsom We're going to see people from, you know, from, you know, Folsom on the light rail all the way to, you know, Roseville on the, on that north side, coming here to this area in a way where we're not stuck in traffic all the time, you know? As much as I love the tailgates. So I think it's an important thing to talk about this, that this project helps the Sac Valley Station. It's a positive thing. It's a positive thing for air quality issues, for ways to safely get to entertainment and to encourage a multimodal process moving forward. So I agree with my colleague on her concerns about the naming rights issues, you know, we should aspire to what we're trying to achieve here. And then, you know, as, I want to close by saying that, of course, I support this moving forward. I think the process on how we engage all the communities and the partners that are involved is going to be the most critical part. But, you know, I'll say that one of the enjoyments I get is watching my kid, we're in Section 109, so we get the shade in the evening, but it's close enough to the battalion that, you know, my eardrums doesn't fall apart, you know? But my kid's best friend, their seats are next to the battalion. So every day after halftime, we will walk over and hang out with the battalion. And one of my favorite songs is, and chants when they get going is, vamos Sacramento, esta noche tenemos que ganar. And for those of you who don't know Spanish, let's go Sacramento, this night, we are going to win. So thank you very much and thank you all to all the partners.
Hey, Garrett, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. It's funny, when I was finished talking, I got like 10 text messages being like, don't withdraw that motion, but the motion is on the table. And I want to speak, I think, directly to Republic and Wilton. I know the chairman just stepped out, but the rest of the council, you're all here. So I'll talk to you. I mean, I'm not going to be here when this comes to council in its final form. And so this is a leap of faith that I would only take because I know you all and I trust you all to do the thing here that's going to need to be done, right? There needs to be more detail here for the folks who live in this community now to know what this means for them. And I trust Republic and your history in this community to be able to put real substance in there. That's going to be meaningful because I've seen what you've done already, right? And I'm really, really trusting that you aren't going to sell the naming rights to Chevron, like, please just don't. I will start showing up at tribal council meetings saying, oh, my gosh, what did you just do? But please just don't do that. I know it aligns with your values. I know why you're doing this. And so this is uncomfortable for me because I'm not used to taking these kinds of like public, like, I'm just going to trust you to do the right thing right now because I know you and I've worked with Republic and I've worked with the tribe and I know that you're going to try to do what's right. I think it's important to do what's right by the community and I think it's really important to do what's right by the workers that are going to need, like, to afford a one-bedroom community home in my community right now, you're lucky to find less than $2,000 a month. You are lucky to find less than $2,000 a month. This is an issue. And I know you know this issue because your tribal members are experiencing it as well. And we want to make sure these workers are taken care of, both in the construction and afterwards. And I was taking a leap of faith tonight by saying yes to a term sheet, not having that written down, because I'm not a lawyer like some of my colleagues, but I like things written down because that's when you know that you can go back and say, this was written down, right? But I'm saying this to you all because I'm not going to lose your phone numbers and I will continue to call and harass you, no, I'm kidding, after I'm gone. But I hope that, I know that your intentions are there. And so I just, I want to say that tonight, that my vote tonight is a vote of confidence. And I trust that you're not going to let me down on that, that we are going to see this project come through in a way that District Four deserves because this is the heart of the next District Four. And that we will be, this will be something that we can all be very proud of in the next couple of years. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have just a few comments. Mayor, I wanted to take this moment because you only have literally a few weeks left, less than a month to go actually, because today's the 12th, because, yes, you have until December 3rd, that's your last meeting. But really want to take this moment to say congratulations to you for your leadership. I know you've been at this and you have the bruises and the battle scars to show us and just really want to center you in this moment and say congratulations to you on leaving this for Sacramento.
Thank you.
And then wanted also really just to thank city staff and everyone who worked behind the scene to really negotiate this term sheet and really bring us to this moment. Mr. Nagel and Chairman Tarango, thank you for your leadership, your steadfast commitment to Sacramento. You know, as someone with 32-plus nieces and nephews that play soccer, I know and understand how much this is going to mean for me and my families and my community. I actually just got a text from a family member saying, Auntie Mai, please vote yes on the Sac Republic stadium. So, so yes. And so I just, I just got that text as well if they're watching this meeting. I got your text. But I just, I do just want to uplift, I think, something that Councilwoman Valenzuela and also Councilmember Garrett mentioned. You know, it's so crucial that as we move forward on this project, there are going to be people who are going to be working, as you know, work to build the stadium and the rail yards. And it's so important for me that they're able to live, to live here, to be able to live here in Sacramento. I'll give an example, right? You know, I loved the Sacramento Kings growing up in South Sacramento, but as a kid, I never got to watch a game in person because my family couldn't afford it. And so, but yes, there were a lot of charitable donations, there was some kids that was able to make it Arco back then, right? But there were kids that we miss, right? And so, yes, I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of amazing good that Sac Republic has done. They've come out to actually Detroit neighborhood when we got our new footsaw court and they've been out there with our students and our babies in Detroit. But we're also still going to miss people in the community. And for me, you know, I really look forward to the many conversation and phases of this project to come because I feel like this is just the beginning. We have a lot of work ahead of us and this day is exciting, but I'm also cognizant that it can only be exciting for me and my spirit if we don't leave any communities behind. Because we've seen that when major projects come in and we don't have anything to protect the communities, we will miss people. And so we have to really think about that, even from a governing perspective, right? Because there are people that we're going to miss. And so I hear the carpenters and I hear folks represent the service workers. I want to say I hear you and that we're going to make sure, I think it's also on this council and this mayor to ensure that as we continue the conversation that you, that all of y'all are at the table as well. Because everyone, anyone who's working at the stadium or who's building, those families should be able to, be able to afford to live in Sacramento and that's got to be a priority. And so with that in mind and with the text from my nieces and nephews, I will be voting yes on this. I think this is a historical moment, but only historical if we don't leave our most vulnerable communities behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Last, Councilmember Tao, make a brief closing remark and then we're going to vote.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for stuff I'd like to commend. Mayor Steinberg on his work to make this, and city manager for getting down to business and bringing in this deal. As one of the newest member on council, you know, and leaving with Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Steinberg in December, you know, this is something that's great for the city. You know, people talk about investing in our downtown corridor and other neighborhoods, it's a discussion, but then we need to really build our downtown corridor, especially our rail yards. And this project is something that's going to highlight Sacramento, make it livable and echo the voices of my colleagues, but also I would like to echo what Mayor Vang says about the forgotten communities, especially in my district, you know? Definitely with Golden One Center, we had a lot of community benefits that really targeted the bringing jobs to certain areas of codes that Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned as well. I hope, you know, these discussions are being had as we go forward. I also, you know, love Republic FC, you know? I think your farm team, you know, pick up the first Mong players, you know, Ryan Herr and Preston Tao, who is actually my nephew, played on your farm teams. He's now with the San Jose Earthquakes. And so definitely, you know, my community is really supportive. We really want to see soccer thrive in Sacramento as well as my community and district too. You know, we have little leagues and that's run by our most forgotten communities, our Latino communities, our Mong communities that really wants to seek the benefits of this deal as well. So definitely, I would encourage the outreach to communities who love soccer in the community, in Sacramento, that's really marginalized, that won't have the opportunity to participate as well. And so with that, I support the deal tonight and close it out with that.
Thank you, Shontao. Thank you so much. So, couple things just call out to me, that these projects and the rail yards will double the size of the Central Business District? What an incredible opportunity. And that Wilton Rancheria is the first tribe to own a professional sports team in North America? We are breaking barriers and making history. And then I just want to appreciate my colleagues who call out the issues of equity. And let us remember that our tribal nations and this tribal nation know better than anyone what it means to be an underdog and what it means to overcome. And in this city, it must never be either or. It's not either big, exciting projects and huge economic development and no equity. It can't be all about aspiring to equity without building and growing and creating more opportunity for everyone. Beauty and the strength of this city is we can hold on to multiple values at the same time. We must grow and create more dynamism and excitement and jobs and opportunities for our people. And that's exactly what we are doing here. And we must do so in a way that includes everyone, working people, our neighborhoods. And this is the foundation and the template for something that is just beautiful today and going to be even more beautiful for this city in the years and the decades to come. So thank you to everyone who got us this far and let us keep going forward together. Please call the roll on this one individually.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I will unmute you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tao?
Aye.
Reputem Talamontes is absent. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
150% yes.
Councilmember Vang?
To my nieces and nephews who texted me, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes! Come on, everybody, for history, for everybody. Have the council brand new, everybody, come on up, please. Come on up.
All right, I'm here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You did it.
Thank you.
You guys, and you needed me. Yes.
Come on.
It'll be okay.
It will be okay.
I am.
Hey, thank you, bro. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much.
Yep, we'll do it right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Come on up, come on up, come on up. Congrats, hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Come on, everybody. We got jerseys! Yeah, we'll take them now. Yes, please. Yes, please.
All right, you guys got to squeeze in like you like each other.
They got you guys the big jerseys with your name.
Woo!
Oh, good try.
This is the way to celebrate.
(Singing) We're not good enough.
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 (Singing) Esta noche tenemos que ganar.
(Singing) Vamos, vamos a controlar.
(Singing) Esta noche tenemos que ganar.
(Singing) Vamos, vamos a controlar.
(Singing) Esta noche tenemos que ganar.
(Singing) Vamos, vamos a controlar.
(Singing) Esta noche tenemos que ganar.
(Singing) Vamos, vamos a controlar.
(Singing) Esta noche tenemos que ganar.
Yeah, yeah, say hi, say hi, you can say hi to them.
Hi, guys.
(Singing) Thank you.
(Singing) Thank you.
(Singing) Thank you, ladies.
(Singing) We're going to burn in the church.
(Singing) Oh, yeah.
(Singing) It's not about that. Big day, first day of the year.
(Singing) Of course.
(Singing) This team after, that's the one, that's the picture of my world.
(Singing) Small enough.
(Singing) Greatness coming again.
(Singing) Nice jerseys.
(Singing) That was my outfit.
(Singing) Madam Clerk, are there, is there public testimony and items?
There are. Okay. Members, members, members? Hold on, we'll get going here, one sec. I'm the last one that wants to break up a happy moment here, but we still, we still have a little bit of business to do. And so I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to turn it over to the vice, the vice mayor for a moment. I'm going to, I'm going to go do.
All right. While we, while we wait for folks to kind of file out, I don't know what's happening. Sorry. I gotta go potty. All right, folks, if you could quietly, please, please exit the chambers with your conversations. Thank you so much. Exciting day. All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment? Not on the agenda. I have five speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is Patricia Culpepper, McWorthy, Rashina Washington, Lambert, and then Rebecca Sandoval. All right, paging Patricia. I don't see any movement. McWorthy, following Mr. Worthy is Rashima, and Washington, then Lambert, and then Rebecca.
To the fire department, there was a truck and two cars burned on First Avenue.
No, you can't, you can't. You can't come back here, please. Yeah, you need to stay back here. Thank you.
On First Avenue, there was a truck and two cars burned. Now, did the fire department do the investigation of how that, they came by and took the truck and...